All right, the next item on the agenda is labeled Presentation by Energy of their outage report. I'll let them start getting settled. What I do want to say, at least from my perspective, is obviously we're interested in what Energy has to say, but I am in a frustrated mood right now because utilities, plural, and this isn't limited to Energy, are causing me a great deal of consternation in the southern half of District A. My staff has pulled emails, and I'm just going to give some of the addresses. This is Dublin between Hickory and Coen, road construction. Sixteen hundred block of Cambrown Street, road construction. Two hundred block of Hillary, road construction. Three thousand seven hundred block of Vincent Place, road construction. One hundred, two hundred block of Broadway, road construction. Twenty-two hundred block of Fern, road construction. I have others here, but my message for the utilities is this part of my district is beleaguered, and we have sewer issues, water issues, utility issues that are eating them up. And when we get to Energy, we ask Curo to put together some numbers, and I'll just let you lead off with, in 2024, equipment disruptions, interruptions are 100% higher than they were last year, and vegetation is 215% higher than it was last year. So I'm not here to berate. That's the easy thing to do and wag your finger. I'm just looking for what the solutions are, and that's really kind of where I want to focus on, is for DPW, what are you going to do to coordinate and make sure that the work with Suits and Waterboard is done correctly? For Suits and Waterboard, what are you doing on the sewer work to make sure the joint infrastructure work is done correctly? And for Energy, as it's happening in these areas, what are we doing to make sure vegetation is identified, cut back quickly? And then Equipment, you know, I know you have lightning in your presentation. What's natural obsolescence, what's not? And as I look down the row, this is not a District A problem. This is a District E, D, C, B, A. So all my colleagues are going to ask questions, and I want to give you the floor and be quiet now, but I just, I want all the utilities to hear, because this isn't directed solely to Energy, that I am in a frustrated mood right now because too many of my emails involve Holly Grove, Carrollton, Black Pearl, Maple, Riverbend, and it's like all these inter, all these utility issues are braided together, and it's really hurting the constituents who are emailing us. And I'll let my colleagues say anything if they want to. Councilmember Thomas?
I was gonna wait.
Okay. All right. I know your tendency is to wait till after the presentation.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. All right. Energy, good morning. Would you like to introduce everybody at the table, please, and the floor is yours?
Good morning, Councilmember Jeruso, and just, you know, I want to impress upon you that we take these issues very seriously, and we recognize that there have been frustrations. It's hot, it's summertime, but we do take reliability very seriously, and we have come here today prepared to present on our year-to-date performance, some of the challenges that we have had, many of which are out of our control, but some of the solutions that we can speak to today and going forward, working with you all. But just by way of introductions, I'm Courtney Nicholson. I have had the pleasure of serving as Vice President of Regulatory and Public Affairs for Entergy New Orleans for the past three years, and I have here, sitting to my left, Mr. Leroy Nix, who I am passing the baton to. I've taken on a leadership role in the legal department at Entergy. So I'm moving to a new opportunity, and I am passing the baton to Mr. Leroy Nix. I trust that I'm leaving these relationships in really good hands, and just as I depart, I will still be working with you all in a slightly different capacity, but just wanted to say it's really been a pleasure serving you all and working with you over the past few years, and I'm looking forward to continuing to do that. Having introduced Mr. Nix, I also have Stephen Benyard, who you guys should be familiar with, because we've had some presentations from Stephen before, Vice President of Reliability, and Ms. Lacretia Wolkerston, who is Regulatory Counsel for Entergy New Orleans. So let's go ahead and turn it over to Stephen. I think he has the clicker, and we'll get right into the meat of the discussion and happy to entertain questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Courtney. Good morning, Council. All right. Before we get started, I would like to recognize a few folks in the room today. Today with us, we have our Youth Force NOLA team with us. If our interns can stand up. Youth Force NOLA is one of the high school programs that we partner with. Right now, we have Darrell Hartford with us from Warren Eastern. We have Zion Daniels from Morris Jeff. We have Wong Tran from Sarah T. Reed, as well as Emily Fraseco from Morris Jeff. Also with us today, I have my operations staff, if they can stand, as well as our customer service staff and regulatory staff. I'd like to highlight some of our operations staff. We're actually linemen and worked on the system and worked their way up to their positions today, but they're here in attendance as well to be a part of the meeting. So thank you all. All right, to get started, we want to talk about New Orleans reliability year-to-date. First, want to start out by talking about our historical reliability. If you look at the first chart that I'm showing, it shows a representation of our SAFE and SED. SAFE is the frequency, how often do outages occur. SED is service unavailability, how many minutes on average a customer experiences an outage. The trend you want to see on this graph, you want to see that down arrow is good, you want to see lower bars. Over time, you can see through our investment and partnering with the council, we have been driving outages down. You see an uptick in 2022. We had two major tornadoes hit the city in 2022, which affected our numbers. And in '23, we did a lot more planned outages tied to our reliability work in 2023. All in all, still driving, all the work that we've been doing has notably been driving better reliability, but there's always room for improvement. On this chart, you'll see New Orleans experienced overall 12% improved SAFE, as well as 18% improved SED from 2022 to '23. When you look at kind of overall projects since 2019, we've done over 96 projects. We spent over $68 million, as well as that amount of spend benefited over 200,000 customers within the city. So we understand the importance of capital investment to ensure that we have a good reliability. Weather has been a major impact this year. We all know that we're seeing systems that are very odd. Like I mentioned before, in 2022, we saw tornadoes, but this year, we've kicked off the year, a very active year thus far with smaller storms. We had six notable weather impacts throughout the year. Fifty-seven percent of kind of the weather impacts were throughout this year so far were non-fair weather. We had 43% fair weather as far as outages, and kind of, if you draw your eyes to the second chart on the slide, you kind of see some of the things that happened during non-fair weather. We have a huge increase in 2024 of lightning impacts to the circuits that have been active this year. So I want to draw your eyes to Napoleon. That one was, I'll talk about a little bit later, and I mentioned Napoleon. That was one of the major outages we had wherein we had 130% more lightning on that particular substation. So we're seeing something, you know, abnormal, a lot more weather. The other thing that we have on non-fair weather days, PIDs, we have, you know, car burst poles and things of that nature that affects the system as well. But as far as our system, lightning has been a major factor. With that said, there's ways that we mitigate those things, and I'll talk a little bit about that, talking about what we're doing moving forward and continue to do. The other major impact to our system this year has been vegetation. We've been actively engaged in vegetation management. We do have an 18-month trim cycle, so we're trimming a lot of trees. We're trimming swiftly. The problem with that is our trimming requirements and our standards are very restrictive in the city. When you look outside of the city, they have a lot more leniency to trim a lot more, so you can actually take that money and do other things with the investment. So in New Orleans, we can trim four feet. We can't trim overhang. There's a lot of different details we cannot do within New Orleans. Outside, in other parishes, we can be more aggressive in order to ensure that we have a better reliability when it comes to vegetation. If you look at the pie chart, both in right-of-way and outside of right-of-way, and vines and things of that nature, and overhanging limbs have been a major contributor to some of our outages. I'm not going to go into the details, but you can see on the slide some of the things that we would like to partner on maybe in the future to see if we have a little more robust trimming opportunities within the city. When it comes to outage impacts, if you break it down by district, or if you look at overall, it tells the same story. Scheduled outages have been a big part of our outages this year. That's tied to a lot of our reliability and infrastructure work that we've been doing. Equipment has also been a high bar, and the next slide will kind of break down what are we seeing in equipment. When we talk about equipment, so just to make sure everyone understands, as far as the public as well, when you talk about breakers, it's similar to your breaker in your house. If something happens, it trips, you figure out what's wrong, you reset it. So breakers probably the larger part of equipment-related outages on this chart. The fuse is like a smart break, not a smart breaker. So a fuse actually blows, you figure out what the temporary fault is, you refuse it and put it back in service. A line switch is like a light switcher house, on, off. The reclosure is an automated device that's like a breaker but far further down the line to help sectionalize what that means, and you cut the line into segments. So if there is something that happens, if this activates, it either reroutes power or it segments so that you have less people out of service, and then transformer. We also see transformer outages. So all these things are meant to protect our system. When temporary faults occur, the team goes out, they look for those faults, they look for opportunities, they look, it could be trees, it could be PIDs, all those different things that cause these equipment-related things to activate. To the right is what I mentioned earlier. The system has taken a lot of hits from lightning and weather throughout the year. In this particular case, this was January 20th and 28th, we had two different lightning arrestor-related outages that caused, that were very noticeable. But the lightning arrestor is something we put on our system to combat lightning. It's a sacrificial piece of equipment that we put on our system that if lightning is detected or affects its device, it opens up and it takes out, it clears itself, and you may see a relay, you may see a blink, and we go on about our business. In this case, this lightning arrestor failed a little more violently wherein it actually, our relay protection at our substation saw the device fail, and it opened up a larger amount of customers. So the whole substation in this case opened up because this arrestor failed. The good thing is, the protection worked. What that means is, we could have had a lot longer outage, we could have a lot more expensive equipment damage if it didn't happen where our relaying system detected the failure of this failed lightning arrestor, which is, like I said, is a sacrificial thing that we put throughout our system to protect us from larger scale affecting our larger expensive transformers, long lead time items, substation infrastructure, et cetera. On the next slide, we're going to talk about our mitigation strategy. I know Councilmember Jeruso, you talked about that, and that's what we're here for. We're talking about, our whole goal is continuous improvement, and our team has been actively thinking of how can we continuously improve year to year to year. Last year, we went on a mission, how do we get ahead of this storm season in 2024? So Mr. Drew Thompson, which is a part of our reliability team, and Shelton Hudson, we sat together, and what he did was, we said, we're going to patrol all of our circuits, worst performing or not, look for imminent findings that could fail from six to 12 months, and they went and touched all those circuits. They also did all the traditional programs, like the 100% program, strategic liability, as well as the 100% lateral program, and still ran those programs, but we made sure that before storm season, we did 60% of those circuits and had that work done so we can have the reliability benefits for our neighborhoods throughout the season. So they were successful. They actually did more than I thought. They did almost 80% of the work prior to storm season, so I applaud them for that. The other thing that they did, they've been working with our internal IT department and looked at smart devices, and what can we do to leverage and understand and be more proactive? So what they did was they took our AMI data, and they're proactively detecting based on voltage signatures, devices that are, that could potentially fail. So they're detecting if a transformer is going to fail, they're seeing if there's service issues. So now we're coming to customers' home and saying, hi, neighbor, we're detecting the issue, you didn't call us, but we need to do some checks on your system. So it's a more planned approach. So when we talk to people, they understand that we're not just sitting waiting for things to happen, proactively doing planned things so that they don't go out when it's most inopportune for them. The other things that we're doing, we, the team has, we took some trips, we talked to a few manufacturers of the latest technology. One of those is the TripSaver, what it does on our branch circuits, it adds reclosing capability further out on the system. So if there's a temporary fault, like we've talked about vegetation, our issue of vegetation, it's going to address that. So if a line brushes, a tree brushes the line, it'll open up, check for everything to clear, close back. If it sees the fault there again, it'll open that up again, allow that temporary fault to clear, and then close back in. It gives it three attempts to restore automatically before rolling the truck and for our customer to be out for a long duration. So Drew and Shelton is going to deploy over 400 of those devices this year within New Orleans. So I applaud them for that. Shared ownership, that's tied to, you know, our conversation, what I was mentioning to you is vegetation. There's a lot of opportunities there. We've been talking about it. We just need to probably sit with you all and see how we can leverage and see what we can do differently when it comes to vegetation management, spend our dollars more wisely to get more bang for our buck there. Design standards, that's the vertical crossarms. We've changed our design standards. When we do go back and replace a pole, we go to the higher design standards. That means we make sure that our infrastructure is up to 150 mile-per-hour wind zone, depending on the wind zone, and ensuring that we're, if we do change the framing for a large section of our line, we change to a standard where it's a vertical construction, so there's less, there's no crossarms on the pole, there's less things to fail on the pole, and if things do fail, we're just putting wire back up. So it makes it a lot quicker for our customers to recover even after storms. That's actually a part of our residency strategy as well. The other cool thing I want to mention, just kind of the partnership, and I want to thank Councilwoman Harris for her partnership with the walk downs, but also the awareness around the poles. We appreciate that. And also, Michael Burnside, which is a community leader, has been really active with our team. I walked into the office the other day, and they were like, hey, we're looking at this pole, Michael sent this one in. I was like, what are you talking about, Michael? Michael Burnside. So I appreciate my team really engaging with the community and getting to know the folks and actively mitigating those things. During our walk down, we actually replaced three, four utility poles with your team, so we appreciate bringing that attention to a pole. We don't necessarily own, but needed attention, so we took care of that with your leadership.
Yeah, that's the ninth council member. Burnside is the ninth.
He's the ninth?
We got an eighth one, but he operates behind the scenes.
Trust me.
We're not going to tell you who he is.
He has our email and our number, so we work closely with him. So we appreciate the relationship that you helped us garner. Also, next steps, we do have District A next. Next week, we're doing the walk down there. We walk in the city. We also wanted to note, we have some distributed automation, so we're continuing to put out smart reclosures. So we're sectionalizing, restoring customers, rerouting power without rolling trucks to make sure our folks continue to stay in power. And then we have our traditional programs, like 100% lateral program, which the team has been doing very well with that. And then residency projects. GRIP is one that's going to kick off coming soon with all the work in New Orleans East. Your District Councilman, Thomas. And then also, we have the Avenue of C project, where we did that big infrastructure project. It's one good to see where we highlight a lot of the different new technologies that we're using to enhance our infrastructure, be it composite, steel poles. We're also doing, you know, the new construction I mentioned as far as vertical construction. So there's interesting things to see there, to see how the kind of the future look of the city. One last thing, substations, we're doing work there as well. That's kind of the heartbeat of where things start, where it goes into the community. So we're doing a lot of breaker changeouts, we're doing some arrestor changeouts, upgrading those. We're also doing some relays changeouts. So we're continuing to refresh our system to meet the needs of the community. And I'd like to thank you for the time today, and I'll ask if there is any questions.
Yeah, I'm going to start, and Councilmember Thomas, Councilmember Harris. I guess the first question I have is, Energy has been spending more money in '23 than it did in 2022 on reliability, yet we're seeing more outages in 2024. So what accounts for spending more money but having more outages?
When you look at the data, it was actually one of the earlier slides, we've had a rash of weather events that have come through this year that has affected our reliability. And then the other thing, too, we had some of our sacrificial items, like the lightning arrestors fail. We have a manufacturer defect that we noticed in one of the outages wherein we work with the manufacturer now, that the arrestor failed prematurely when it shouldn't have. So there's a lot of other things that you can't see visually or detect through technology like thermography that can occur that affects our reliability as well.
I'm just going to say, on Energy's own data, which they provide to us, over 20% of the outages were in fair weather and have nothing to do with weather. So on February 6th, accidental tripping in fair weather. On April 16th, transient fault, fair weather. On June 20th, in Districts A and B, equipment failure, arrestor, fair weather. On June 28th, again in Districts A and B, arrestor, fair weather. So I understand that weather is an issue. I believe in climate change. I know that weather can cause things, but 22% of the outages have nothing to do with the weather.
So that's what I was mentioning on this slide earlier. When the weather does come through, there is effects that we don't see on our system that show up once there's no weather, but also there's failed pieces of equipment that do happen as well. Like this arrestor failed during one of those events you mentioned, that actually took out in our relaying scheme, stopped a major outage. We were able to detect it, fix it, repair it.
Wait, I don't understand. You're saying, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. And when I start rubbing my head is when I get frustrated, okay? So that's my tell. I don't understand. Are you saying that even though Energy listed as a fair weather, bad weather actually caused it? I mean, because it says fair weather. This is not Joe's data, this is not the advisor's data, this is not Curo's data, this is Energy's data. So I'm asking, am I allowed to rely, when Energy tells me it's fair weather, that the outage happened in fair weather? The answer seems like it ought to be yes.
The data is correct.
Okay. So then, the question is, why are we having, I mean, four may not in a cumulative sense seem like it's that much, but you had 2,400 customers who lost power, 640 customers who lost power, 10,000 customers who lost power, and 4,000, my rough math is it's like 17,000 or 18,000 customers within three or four months who lost power for a period of time.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm just saying, like, what are we doing to prevent, let's take a step back. For the thing that happened on any of these problems, transient fault, the arrestor failure, the otherwise, are those because equipment has reached its natural obsolescence?
No, that's perfect case studies, the actual rest I showed you earlier. It was a manufacturer defect. Now we know of the defect. Now we're inspecting all our stations for that similar lightning arrestor and having them replaced proactively. So that's, you know, an example of a fair weather outage.
Okay.
And then another point, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Jeruso, but another point, I don't want to get lost, that I think Stephen was raising, is that over time, intense weather causes degradation to the equipment. So then if, say, a piece of equipment gets hit by a lightning strike, tornado, intense weather, and it doesn't fail during that event, and it fails three weeks later, that will be deemed a fair weather outage. We wouldn't attribute it to weather. So I just wanted to make sure that that point was.
I assume that's what the discussion was going to be. Hang on. But I think our point, our point, not just my point, our point on behalf of our constituents who email, who text us before we get the Energy alert, who are texting us throughout, who text us afterwards, is this is the world we're living in. I mean, that's just the bottom line. I don't know how many times I've had to listen to Suits and Waterboard say, it was a 25-year, 50-year, 100-year rain event. This is the new normal. So we all have to adapt to what the new normal is, and I worry about saying, we live in a subtropical climate. I mean, it's been bad here since I was a kid. It's gotten worse. We all know that. So we have to adapt to it getting worse, and I think, and I think the bottom line is, and then I have crossarm failures in two places. Are the crossarm failures that happen in two different locations, it looks like, were that because a thunder struck the crossarm, or is that because the equipment was old and the crossarm failed? April 10th on both, one in Holly Grove, one in Mid-City Dixon.
Those, we can follow up with your staff on, get you an answer exactly to the cause.
All right. So let's talk about that for a second. Another point of frustration. June 20th, I asked for a meeting with Energy about to discuss these issues. Energy couldn't meet until like, two weeks ago. Then on July 18th last week, July 18th, finally have the meeting, we ask a number of questions. What infrastructure has been replaced in District A already? Not answered. What infrastructure has been identified and passed past its natural lifespan and needs to be replaced? Unanswered. Any planned infrastructure replacement in District A? Unanswered. Timeline to change out problematic arrestors on substation? Unanswered. Any update on Energy communication plan to customers following outages? Unanswered. In fairness, we did get the Park and Parkway's draft plan that we've been asking for. I'm just in the business of, I've got to be able to communicate with the public because it hurts our, and not just Energy. I'm going to fuss at DPW and Suits and Waterboard next, okay? Y'all just happen to be first. But we've got to be able to tell people what's going on, plain and simple. And the bottom line is, we asked a month ago. If I'd asked two days ago, you'd every right to say to me, Jeruso, you're being unfair and sandbagging us. But I started a month ago because we saw this trend line. We're at 18 outages in District A, and like I said, equipment failures are 100% increased since last year. Vegetation, over 200% increased since last year. So we've got to get to not only what the mitigation strategy is, but A, have it implemented, and B, have the communication as quickly as possible about not only what went wrong, but when it's going to be fixed. And the same is true, let me say, the same is absolutely true for the other utilities too. I'm tired of hearing, just be patient, we're going to work on this, we're going to do better with our communication. That's exhausting, particularly from the FEMA work that's been going on for so long. I just, I want to make very crystal clear from my perspective that I'm not here to rake you all over the coals. I'm here to find what the solutions are to get those things done, and it's happening in other districts too. So with that, Councilmember Thomas?
Hey, Councilmember.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep. And I'd just like to add that, you know, when it comes to the communication of information, that's the floor, the baseline. We are committed to making sure that you have, and all of the other councilmen, you have what you need. We're also committed to partnership, so that's my commitment to you.
Well, I appreciate it. I'm just, I'm just going to say, I realize you're new. So I, we, there's a period of time where I can fend off the public, right? Hey, I lost power. I can't get Energy to tell me today. I can't get Suits and Waterboard to say, what happened here? I can fade heat for a good 24 or 48 hours, right? But when it's a recurring issue, number one, and then when there isn't the communication on those recurring issues, number two, and then number three, most importantly, we can't articulate what the plan is, we're sunk. And then that's when you get frustrated councilmembers who want to ask all the utilities what's going on. And so I appreciate, I appreciate wanting to work with us. I want to work too. It's much, trust me, I tell people all the time, it's much easier to work together with somebody than it is to fight with them. Takes more time, more resources, more energy. That's not the place I want to be. But where I need to be is, I just want to stress as strongly as I can. I am tired of being eaten up by my neighbors on these issues that have been going on for such a long time. And unfortunately, what happens with Energy and Suits and Waterboard and AT&amp;T and DPW all intertwined, particularly when the issues seem to be in a certain geographic area. Councilmember Thomas?
I guess I'm going to take you guys out of the coals and put y'all back on a little dry land for now. You hope that reliability leads to sustainability. At some point, that's an issue in the city. It seems at every level, even when we fix something, how does it become sustainable, from crime to education? A few of the questions that I have is, well, first of all, Ms. Nicholson, thank you. I mean, in terms of your personality and what you do and being available, you have done a wonderful job.
I appreciate it.
You really have.
Thank you.
And also, I kind of wrote my notes down. The line staff has been tremendous. I've experienced something a little different from Councilmember Jeruso, but even when there's some satisfaction or response, the person who lost their lights, or the person who was out, they don't want to hear why, they don't want to hear anything about the questions we have. They just know that the lights, the lights are out. But in my district, what I've noticed is that when we have outages, they're back on quicker. They're restored quicker. So, of course, we don't like the fact that they're out, but we like the fact that you guys have consistently, over the last, I think, year or so, we don't experience outages for as long. Of course, we don't want them to be out in the first place. So that kind of leads me to a question. Just like crime in the city, Stevie Wonder can go to a map and tell you where crime is happening. Usually a disparaged community, or a community that's been left out of economic development, or left out of resources, right? Well, historically now, your outages, especially, you know, in my district and others, if there's an outage, I can go, it was probably here there. So what do you guys do in that area? Is it Transformer B that went out again? Is it that same squirrel that, you know, Crowder and Morrison that invites people over for Essence? So all of the squirrels put too much pressure on the system. Is it that pigeon? system? Is it that pigeon that flew to Houston, but he's back now, so he's perching on downtown lines? Again, do y'all, do y'all keep a, like a list to say, you know, well, yeah, it's that same transformer, it's that same squirrel, it's that same pigeon, and then this is how we ought to deal with the transformer, the pigeon, and the squirrel?
Councilmember Thomas, you're exactly right. We have a-
Say that again?
Yes, you're right. You're right. We do have a metric called SEMI that we track-
I want to copy that.
Multiple outages for a particular customer. So when we start to see those trends, we can use one of our reliability programs and focus on that particular device that operated so that we can mitigate kind of the repeat offenders and kind of understand what's causing vegetation and animal, you know, we have animal guards for that, or we need to trim, or do we need to put other kind of guards in place to prevent that?
Then to Councilmember Jerusaleh's question is that, then he should have that same information.
That's right.
So that we can share. So I can walk my neighbors to the corner, Morrison and Crowder, and we can go talk to the squirrel ourselves, right? We can say, hey, man, every year there's Essence. You're inviting too many other squirrels, right? So the systems, so we can catch the pigeon who flew back, who perches down on the lines downtown. So if you could begin to share that with us, and we could share that with our constituents, that would help them. But in terms of y'all responses, I just have to say that y'all have been exemplary at a team that you guys have assembled, has been extremely, extremely responsive. It does not give too much satisfaction to the person who maybe lost their power, or who's trying to wait for it to be turned back on. But you guys actually remind me of, I think, of some of the glory days of the company, when, yeah, there may be an issue, but y'all have dealt with it upfront. You've dealt with it responsibly, and y'all have been expeditious. So I've noticed that. I appreciate that. We just got to get from reliability to sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to take you back to the coals. I want to talk about the Lower Garden District because we've had several repeated outages in the Lower Garden District. And I know that's where Walter and my team-
That's that pigeon.
And you're, we might need a BB gun, but, no, I'm kidding. I like animals. But we've had repeated outages in the Lower Garden District. Have we figured out why we keep having the outages in the Lower Garden District? And have we resolved the issue?
For entire, we, reliability is all about the grids. We look at the entire infrastructure all at once to make sure that, depending on where the trouble spots is, our reliability program pinpoints those outages and go after them. So the Lower Garden District, or even in the east, wherever it's happening, we make sure that we have a mitigation strategy to ensure that folks aren't having kind of repeat issues.
But we are having repeat issues. And that's my question is, we keep having the same houses being without power in the Lower Garden District, and it doesn't seem to have been mitigated. I'm hoping that the walkthrough that we did, I know we identified some issues in the Lower Garden District, and we specifically chose that area because there were repeat outages in the Lower Garden District. So I'm hoping that you can tell me, and you don't have to tell me right now, the reason for those outages, and what the mitigation strategy is going forward.
I would love to do that and sit down with your staff and yourself and kind of walk through that and provide some data points and what the mitigation actions are.
Okay. And then on the data points, I want to get back to your slide number eight, if you can do that. So your slide number eight says, all districts, fifteen hundred or so outages. That's not people. That's the number of outages, right?
Correct.
Can you extrapolate from that number, that fifteen hundred approximate number, how many people were impacted by those outages?
We can. We can. I don't have the-
Can you do that right now?
I don't have it in front of me right now.
Yeah. I mean, I'm looking at District B. So we've had four hundred and twenty-three outages year to date. Four hundred and twenty-three outages. I want to know how many people that has impacted, because it's one thing to say we've had four hundred and twenty-three outages, and it seems like, for me, it seems like a high number. But if you say that four hundred and twenty-three outages impacted twenty thousand people, or it's repeatedly impacted a certain segment, that's information that we need to know. So I would like an expansion of this data, and I'm sure that my colleagues in the other districts would like to know that as well. Not only the number of outages, but how many people were impacted, and then how many people repeatedly were impacted, because I think that goes to the reliability and figuring out exactly what the problem is.
Sure. And then also, once we, you know, I know we've mined some of this data, and there's a lot of impacts. There's some policy, like, for example, vegetation, we want to be able to partner with you on as well.
Okay, good. You know, Matt from my office, I asked him, how many outages have we had in the past two months? He said, in June, we've had six outages, and July, one outage so far. I feel like that number is a little bit low, because I get on the text, and thank you for communicating via text when there are outages, so we can notify our constituents. But again, I just think the number of outages and the reliability, we need to increase. And that goes to what you mentioned before, the poles that are termite eaten. I have photos, and I'm going to text Courtney right now, of two poles that are sistered together. One is a replacement Entergy pole, and thank you for replacing it. And then one has a city camera on it, and some other utilities. And we've been going around and around in circles trying to get DPW to take the camera off, and the street sign down. Meanwhile, there's a pole hanging next to another pole, and it looks insane, and it looks dangerous. And I'm not fussing at you, because I see Joe Threat and Rick Hathaway over there, and I'm going to fuss with them when they're up here, because we need better coordination. When a pole is replaced, and there are city assets on it that need to be moved, we need to have coordination between the city and you all to make sure that we don't have a half-eaten, termite-eaten pole that's hanging from the sky. And this is the Mr. Burnside situation, right? This is what he complains about, are these poles that are just levitating in the air, especially in poorer neighborhoods. And we need to make sure that we're getting city resources off of those poles, onto the Entergy poles, if that's where they belong, and getting the damage pole out. So I'll fuss at them, but I'm also fussing at you.
Thank you.
I do want to talk about spoilage. We have had questions when, when the power goes out for a number of hours. People are worried about spoilage of their food. Is there a way to make a claim to you all for spoilage of food, or do they need to just go through their insurance?
We can take that up at, like, a later date if possible, as it relates to any claims. But as of, to date, no, that's not the, that's not the case.
And to be clear, if it's, it depends. They can call our claims department and file a claim.
Okay.
And then depend on what's the causation, then they'll determine if the claim is paid or not.
Okay. So yeah, let's, it sounds like we need to get a meeting, and then we need to do a follow-up public meeting about what you all are doing, how we can mitigate these outages, and then whether or not people can make claims for property that's impacted when there is a long-term outage.
There is a process, and we can talk about it so the public understands. And it's just, it depends on the cause of the outage.
Okay. And then I want to turn to my favorite thing, which is 3-1-1 and the poll reporting. I want the public to know that if you have a pole that's leaning or falling down, you can call 3-1-1 and report it. And then Entergy, AT&amp;T, the other utilities can identify whether or not it's their asset. And then you all have responded. And I, back to Councilmember Thomas's point, there is, there has been an increase in the swiftness of response when there is pole that's down. So I want to thank you for that.
Yeah, it's a much more efficient process. So thank you for championing that. It's really been helpful for us to coordinate when that happens, so that from the customer, the public's standpoint, they don't care whose pole it is. We just want to get that fixed as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you. Councilmember Morell, then Councilmember Green.
Okay, let me begin. I've got a question from Councilwoman Moreno, who I have to leave. It's actually for Joe Rogers. And the question is, is Energy New World within the reliability standards set by the council?
Yes, Councilmember. They are currently within the reliability standards, but the reliability standards are the bottom line, right? Reliability standards are how low can you go before you get penalized? But the, what the council expects is reliability performance well above the reliability standards.
Okay. A follow-up question from me, because that was, like I said, Council President Moreno's question. I know that in your ultimate reliability package at Energy Louisiana, there was some language that dealt with potentially the reliability and accountability of newly-installed equipment. And I think it might be important to kind of talk to the public about that, because obviously, as we're trying to work together to replace old equipment, the question inevitably comes up is, what happens if the old, if the new equipment that's supposed to be more reliable fails? And what is the, what is the accountability, and what is the metric, if we, as the public, and you as Energy, pay for and install a new pole, and that pole is unreliable? So could y'all talk about that for a second?
That ties to the resilience, the approved resiliency docket in Enchenee, Louisiana's territory. So what that is, based on the resiliency package, all of the projects that they're going to do, if they were to install a new pole, based on if that pole fails or not during a major weather event, there is a penalty tied to that. So that's tied to resiliency, what you're mentioning.
Okay. I think that's, I want to say that, because it's obviously, as we continue to have more conversations about resiliency, the council is very interested in that if, as we continue to expand the conversation and look at how much money we're going to spend on resiliency, it's important also, in that same dialogue, talk about, we want to increase accountability for the resilience, for those resiliency options. So I appreciate you explaining that. That's all I have, Councilmember Jerusaleh, for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Councilmember Green?
Thank you, Councilman Jerusaleh. And Ms. Nicholson, I wish you the best in whatever you might be doing once you leave here. So I appreciate the work that you've done, your sincerity and your spirit, what you've done. And welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Look forward to seeing you more often.
Yes, sir.
And I know that you look forward to seeing us too, right?
There's no question about it.
Okay, I just have a, let me get my technical question out of the way, because I do share this information with the public, and somebody's going to ask me, if you go to slide number eight, it's just a, I want you all to explain to me, is there a reason that we identified outages in District D, which has the highest number of outages by number as opposed to a percentage? Is there something that I should know? Because I take this information that I just share with the public, and I go on to these sites, and I share information. So the question may be asked, is there anything specific that I should know?
What I'd like to do is, for you, Councilmember, we can put together some specifics and send over to your office.
Okay, and that's fine. So there's nothing special?
No, it's similar compared to all-
Okay. Everybody else, every other district is in terms of percentages, and this one is in terms of numbers. And it's obvious that it can be converted, but if there was something that I needed to know?
No, nothing special. Very similar.
But you see what I mean?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. The second thing is, is that can you prepare the public for the comments that you were making relative to what the city's restrictions are on tree trimming versus other parishes that prevent us from doing some of the work here? The reason that I ask is because, of course, that issue may be brought up, and if it's something that needs to be discussed, it needs to be discussed. What restrictions exist in the city that might be worthy of the public having input on, and also of the council considering?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Green. When you look at the restrictions in New Orleans itself, we only can trim up to four feet. If you go to other parishes-
Explain that, four feet away from the line.
Four feet away from the line.
Right.
Right away.
Right from, right from the line. And what happens is, in addition to that, other parishes can trim up to eight feet away and cut overhang. When there's lines, actually tree limbs hang overhang our lines, we can't cut that away unless there's a major outage. I mean, going to trim those. In our secondary, which is like the service conductor that go to homes, we can't cut in that as well unless there, because that's a lot of different branches, unless there's an outage. The other thing that we see is, if there's a branch that is eight inches in diameter, we can't cut that branch. We can cut all the tree limbs that come off that branch to kind of clean it up, but we can't cut that, that four-inch branch. When you think about the data, it's over fifty percent of our customer interruptions when it comes to vegetation, and seventy-five percent of the minutes attributed to kind of our vegetation outages are due to these trimming clearance zones that occur. So if we can sit down and maybe have some new policy to help us kind of mitigate some of the vegetation, so we can actually trim less and do more in the reliability space, it'd be very helpful for us.
And this is really prevalent for some of the parts of the city with those beautiful tree canopies. So certain parts of District A, District B, District D, with the, you know, dense canopies, it's a, it's a give and take. It looks beautiful. And it's not so pretty when you cut a lot of those trees away, but it certainly impacts reliability, and we're seeing it, you know, in the numbers.
I just don't want us to be afraid to discuss the fact that that may be something that we need to look at. And you said it. I think the members of the council will agree that reliability is so important. We have people who are, you know, many times without power, and they really have a need for it, which is based on equipment that they use, life-saving, life-sustaining equipment. So it's always going to be a tough decision or a tough discussion, but we need to discuss it.
And Councilmember Green, to that point, you know, we discussed as possible mitigation strategies, just the coordination around development plans and all of that. So we certainly look forward to that discussion with you, because it's going to take a lot of parties coming to the table to discuss this.
I'll give you an example, that I am involved with organizations that plant trees, and we actually have discussions relative to the tree planting, where it should be, keeping in mind that two hundred years from now, the tree will be in a position that it could influence the utilities and the like. Unfortunately, those discussions weren't had in the past.
Right.
Some of the trees that we love and enjoy in our city are not to have, should not have maybe been planted where they were.
And typically when we're-
And the type tree-
That's right.
-might be different.
That's exactly correct. When we meet with those specific institutions about planting trees, we have those discussions, right tree, right place, will impact our lines. We do locate if there's underground facilities. So all the new trees have been great, you know, working in concert with those organizations. All the old trees have been our issues.
Right. I appreciate the updates that you all give when there are outages. And I know, I want our public to know that I certainly recognize that there have been more in District D. But can you talk about lightning strikes, vegetation, and also, lightning strikes in terms of the four hundred pieces of equipment that you're going to install that are going to reduce that, so that the public feels that we're not just comfortable with, especially, I'll be selfish, in my district, with going above the, I mean, going higher. We want to reduce that number. So could you talk about that? Could you talk about lightning? Why so many lightning strikes, you know, these days, and what we're going to do about it with specifics relative to what you mentioned?
So mitigation strategy, lightning arrestors do work, but also our new design bases, our new design changes work as well. So our grounding in every pole, we're actually putting the grounds instead of outside the pole with our new poles, inside the pole. So people like to cut some of our grounds off our poles. So in order to stop-
Wait, wait. Hold on a second. People like to what?
Cut the grounds. So the grounds is a mitigation strategy to bring the actual lightning, that current, to ground. And we see it's copper wire that comes down.
Oh, you mean, when you say people, we mean criminals?
Criminals.
Yes, use the word.
Yeah.
If they're taking copper, they're criminals. It's not somebody who's living in a house who says, I don't like the way this is going. They're criminals.
You're exactly right. So when the criminal element does and cuts the lines on our poles, it compromises our grounding. So it heightens the lightning threat. So with our new infrastructure that we're installing, we're actually putting the grounds inside the pole, that wire that goes down that copper inside, so the criminals can't get to the actual grounds. So when we do have lightning arrestors, when we have those new, the new infrastructure, and our existing infrastructure, we're changing some of our wire so that it's not copper anymore, it's a different element. So it's less likely that a criminal will want to cut those wires as well. When it comes to our new design standard, when it comes to how we build our infrastructure, all the smart devices also mitigate and self-restore. And it senses those actions. When it comes to lighting, it'll open up, see everything that's clear, everything back to normal, and restore power. So there's a lot, there's some, you know, engineering as far as fixed items we put on the system to mitigate lightning, but also there's some smart items that we put on the system to mitigate and restore quicker during those events, relaying and things of that nature. When it comes to vegetation, we build our new infrastructure and our existing infrastructure, depending on where we are, depending on the causal factors, we'll go in and reframe our poles, so maybe the poles will be taller, or we'll pull, we'll make sure that the framing is closer to the pole, we'll go to the vertical framing, so that you don't have the obstruction of vegetation be able to get in to the circuits, or move the circuit to the side where the tree isn't. So there are a lot of different things that we do, design-wise, to help mitigate the vegetation and the lightning.
Can you talk to the public about the death of copper and how it affects the system? And honestly, what would you like to see that increases the penalty, if necessary, for the criminals who know exactly what they're doing? For example, a criminal recently took a chainsaw and cut a pole on Alvar Street, causing outages throughout the neighborhood, including to elderly people who might be on equipment, so that he could get that one piece of copper. Is there something that we can do about it? And if you're uncomfortable with talking about enhanced penalties, I'm not. I'm not. It doesn't have to be the death penalty, Councilman Thomas, but when somebody does that, they know exactly what it's going to do, because it happens while they're there. They leave, and they know that the electricity has gone out in a particular area, and they just don't care. But just could you talk about, so that the public knows, the severity of the situation relative to stealing copper?
You know, we didn't mention it in detail here, but we do, we have some major events tied to- You know, we didn't mention it in detail here, but we do, we have some major events attributed to thieves that have occurred this year that kind of caused cascaded other events to happen on our system. Um, it's unfortunate, but with that said, to mitigate that, we've been partnering with the council, of course, but also the True Crime Center. We've, uh, invested and put up some cameras that are at our critical substations so that we can have police presence as soon as, you know, uh, the threat is detected in the future. But also, um, a lot of other mitigation strategies, um, I'm not going to give the details, but to, to really kind of ward off that type of critical, critical element. And also even investments in cut-through, uh, cut-proof and, um, fencing and things of that nature that, uh, make it very hard for the criminal element to get close to some of our more static, um, facilities.
Mm-hmm, it's important. It's not just a simple matter of I get my copper and I'm gone. The electricity is out to a lot of people. And again, I emphasize elderly people who are on ventilation machines and the like. It's not just a, it's not just a crime that can be addressed right away. And to whatever extent that we can between the council and the state, um, we need to look at what needs to be done to lessen the sever, you know, to lessen the number of incidents. Because I know that you all don't want to use the numbers now, but I know more than you think, I know.
I know you know, sir.
You know, and that's a very, I go to them all, you know, when there's an instance of, of out, outages and you all, you know, have been somewhat removed from the mentioning of the criminality of it and what you can do. But I think that we as a council especially can help. And I have two legis, former legislators, for example, on this council. That's an issue that is as serious as, there are people who die. There are people who die. Let's, I'm sorry, this is not actually maybe the best time for it, but it is, to those who are watching, who might be inclined to take some of this copper out of poles, people are really affected by that in some very negative ways. But let me go back to lightning strikes for a second. Um, are there any other areas of the, are there areas of the city that are more prone to lightning strikes that take out power than others? Is it tree-related? Is there a lot of water, for example? What, what might make more areas prone and what can we do about that?
It's, it's been widespread when we look at the data, the listing of the substation I showed was, uh, throughout the city. So we're, we're seeing that trend this year, um, particularly on all, all portions of the city.
I see on that, um, I see on that report, however, I see 10,000 strikes, for example. Give me the, let's go back to number six, for example. And maybe you can give me the number because I want to, um, fully understand it. I think the public would want to understand. If I took a shot of this and I sent it to the public, why would I not be more concerned about lower coast and 10,000 strikes there? A hundred and seventy-six percent increase versus Trico, which has, um, 3,000 strikes and a 65% increase. It seems that there are certain areas where there's more significant increases than in others. If I'm, 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 I feel that I'm reading that correctly.
You are reading that correctly.
Yeah.
And then, you know, it's funny, you, you actually pointed to one where we had some criminality, so some of our protections there were cut. Whereas the lightning affect those systems a lot more, um, than it would in the past.
But this is lightning strikes.
Right, but if you don't have the grounding and things.
Gotcha.
Yeah, as we discussed.
All right, going back to the criminality and the effects that it has. But you would say that there's nothing in our city in terms of tree canopy or near, nearness to water and canals that makes certain areas more prone than others?
No, no.
Trees?
We haven't, we haven't seen any trends that, uh, kind of gives us an indication of where it's more prone as far as lightning.
Okay, I appreciate that information. Talk about the 400 pieces of equipment that are going to be installed. You used that 400 number. Tell the public what's going to happen there.
So the 400, uh, pieces of equipment that I referenced earlier is called a trip saver. So what it does is, um, you know, we have the trunk, which is our main feeder, I want to describe it so the public understands. You have that, that main trunk of the, of the, of the tree, that's your main feeder that comes from your substation. But off that tree, there's a bunch of branches. Those branches are the laterals of the circuits where we can put trip savers. So you have the protection of the substation up front that feeds and so maybe some reclos down the line. But when you have those branch circuits, typically you just have fuses, they're not smart devices. Now we're putting smart devices, 400 smart devices across the city that can tell if there's a temporary fault, it'll open, check, close back, open, check again, close back. And if the temporary fault goes away, the customers stay in power. So it's, it's lessening the time of, of effects of temporary faults. So that's what that 400 devices we're deploying this year in the city.
400 out of how many could we use to really lessen the impact throughout our city? What is the number 400 based on?
400 is based on kind of our initial wave. We wanted to see how, um.
This is a pilot?
This is a pilot. We're trying to see the reliability benefit. We have, you know, thousands of branch circuits that come off our feeders that, um, are potential for this. We just got to make sure we run the, uh, the engineering analysis and then we're going to see how the pilot does this year. And then we'll continue to add to that program moving forward based on what we see.
If it works, for example, at the locations, which it should, at the end of the day, it's technology.
It's a great product.
Right. So, um, we could expect that there would be some potential expansion of that program?
And that's what it's all about, continuous improvement. If, um, I'm, I'm quite sure I've used it in the past and I think it'd be a good thing to expand once we get the first subset out into the, the field.
Okay, and this is my last point. I sent, um, we send in information from time to time. Council, Councilman Thomas says, no, it's not going to be my last point. This might be my last one. Sometimes when you, it might be, sometimes when you cut trees around wires, the wires have grown into the trees. And so they have to stay there and during storms, they sway. I just want to prepare you for, there are a couple of instances in Hunter Train Park, for example, and other communities throughout our city where there are still pieces of wood hanging in place. And I know that it's going to require you to turn off the electricity to the entire community to be able to do it. The problem is, is that as our storms, as our winds grow, it's going to be an issue in more places. Might as well think about how you can address it now. I understand that if you went too close to it, and I don't want anybody from Entergy or any company to go too close to it, it would have to be turned off. But I just prepare you that as I see certain storms, the wind's blowing more, I see a lot more swaying of lines and that can't be good.
It won't, it's not good. And so anytime you have situations with the public and we're going to continue to patrol, patrol lines and look for those instances, we'll take care of that.
I think that the public will understand.
Thank you.
You all also send out a lot of good notices. I appreciate that. But sometimes at the end, it might not be hurtful to say what the po, what the problem was. If it was a lightning strike, you can say it. Uh, you, you can use the right words if you want, if you don't want to use the word theft. But if it's an issue of vandalism, you can use that word vandalism. It's really theft and it's criminals, but if you want to use that word vandalism, that's fine. But that is helpful to the public too, to know what caused it. They're going to, my folks who are on my newsletter and other places are going to see these numbers, so they're going to know that there are a lot of lightning strikes and the like. But it is something where I've seen you do it a couple of times and say the cause of the issue was lightning striking and transformer. The more information you share, the more comfortable, comfortable the public feels, so.
Absolutely, I agree. And, and before we actually share those, we'd like to research and make sure that that's exactly what happened.
Right, absolutely. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Green. I, I would just say, in, in sort of like the fairness to the point Councilmember Green's making, we've also heavily emphasized with Department of Public Works that in the last term, we, the council, passed an ordinance, um, allowing DPW to find people who clog catch basins up to $5,000. In my view, that is also something that is killing our system where people are blowing their leaves and their other things and contractors do not care and are allowing things to get into our system and there have been zero citations issued to date. So Councilmember Green, I think this is, this is a problem the city also needs to address. We need to get our house in order as well when it comes to that. Not, not Energy, but, but Department of Public Works and the city. Um, go back very quickly, we go Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Morel, and with the advisors, and then I have three public comment cards and six online comments.
Well, I just want to say I'm glad that we have Kiro and our advisors here because I asked the question of how many people were impacted, if you go back to slide eight, by the, uh, 1,583 outages. And they've calculated that over 177,000 people have been impacted by these outages. So there's your number. Um, so of that 1,500 or so outages, half the city has been impacted by the outages of, as, at one time or another. And I think that's important information for you all to know, for you all to calculate and also to determine whether or not repeat customers are impacted repeatedly by these outages.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice President Morel.
Thank you. Um, I'm, and I know this is kind of following more Jones' line of, Joe's line of questioning than Eugene's. I know that Energy is very sophisticated in tracking where copper that is stolen is taken. And I know you work with NOPD on it. I want to highlight something that I know it's kind of understood but not said out loud. People are only stealing copper because other people are buying it.
Yeah, that's true too.
So it's not like people are stealing copper from energy poles. They're not stealing copper and Joe Thredle will be here shortly. All the lights on the highway are going out and Joe will speak to it. A lot of this copper theft on the highway, literally people climbing on that way and pulling the copper out the poles. But it is evident that there are, have to be essentially recycling facilities, metal recycling facilities in the city that are buying this copper at this scale. There just simply isn't a small-scale operator and it's gotten so bad, and obviously AT&amp;T isn't here, we have people cutting down fiber optic lines, looking for copper that isn't in the line. But they're still cutting down fiber optic lines and stripping it because they think it could be copper and it could be stolen. I mean, it has gotten so bad, people are stealing plaques for civil rights and LGBT historic facilities, putting them in shopping carts to take them somewhere. The people that are stealing this are not mounting it on the wall, they're taking it somewhere to get recycled. So, um, the council has passed a very robust padlock law. A very robust padlock law, and I think that it would be very helpful to this council in particular that as you're researching where these thefts are going, as you're researching using the real-time crime center with NOPD as to who are purchasing the copper, we should just be shutting down the facilities. And I can tell you to Councilman Jeruso's point, the moment you actually go padlock one of these facilities, because I mean, buying the stolen copper is already illegal. The challenge that we've always had is that there is, in order to get to that level of criminality and that level of participation in criminality, you have to prove that there's illegal copper present. Once they've recycled it, you've lost the evidence. The threshold for the padlock law is very low. And a preponderance of evidence, information provided by y'all, working with NOPD has, this company is the more than likely source of it. Us doing more research and more investigation, it's easier to meet that threshold to padlock a company for buying illegal copper than it is to pursue criminal action against them. So we look forward to working with y'all on it. It's something that we can have some significant movement on if you guys, because I know you have a lot of resources, obviously internally. You have your own investigators, you probably have private investigators, you have the ability to do all that. If you could just share that information with us, we can work together to really thwart that because the moment copper stops being bought, you'll see less copper theft. Okay, Councilman Moreno? House President Moreno?
Yeah, a quick follow-up on that. Um, when you all, and I'm sorry, I had to step out for a second. Um, when you all have these copper thefts, are, are those reported to NOPD? They are reported to NOPD? Okay, great. Um, the reason why I mention all of this is I know that, um, that state police and Chief Kirkpatrick have been talking about potentially putting together a task force to deal with what Councilmember Morel talked about on who exactly is, you know, buying the copper, et cetera. But I think they're also trying to make sure that they're mapping out exactly where, um, copper thefts are occurring across the city. So just wanted to make sure that those were all being reported. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Bazil?
Thank you, Councilmember. The council and, and Kiro has asked us to follow up on this conversation today. There's a lot of good information exchanged. But we think that there's more information that we need to get and some things that we need to dig into a little bit deeper, put some other things into perspective. And for example, despite all those lightning strikes, outages caused by lightning are actually down pretty significantly, like 52% compared to last year. So, um, that's something that we got to dig a little deeper into. It's not really a lightning issue. It's an equipment issue and it's a vegetation issue. And historically, vegetation hasn't really been as significant an issue as in this past quarter. So they've asked us to try to help figure out how we're going to solve these problems. So, um, the advisors are going to follow up with some questions, um, try to get some more detail and some more information, try to increase the level of communication about these things. As you've heard reflected in some of the questions of the council members. So we just wanted to let you know, and I think with Kiro and the council's blessing, we're going to be following up with some questions and we're going to try to turn things around pretty quickly.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Nix. All right, um, I'm going to get to public comment now, Mr. George, uh, Mr. Moss and Mr. Morgan. I would just remind everybody, um, two minutes, we're going to try and hold fast to that time and please keep your comments to remain with the subject matter.
Thank you. Jesse George, on behalf of the Alliance for Affordable Energy. Uh, I'd like to thank Councilmember Jeruso for pointing to the more recent outage data, uh, from the first quarter of this year because it presents a clearer picture of outages as compared to what Entergy presented here today. Uh, while there was a slight decrease in customer interruptions between 2022 and 2023, the outages for the first quarter of this year are nearly double that of the first quarter of 2023. So it's a little premature to declare a, a trend or a, a, of improvement in reliability at this point. Um, I'd also like to point out that 35% of these, uh, failures or outages, uh, are due to equipment failures, more than a third. So we're talking about vegetation, we're talking about animals. Uh, those two things combined only accounted for 16% of total outages. Whereas over a third were from equipment failures and nearly, or 43% were during days of fair weather. This to me points to poor maintenance of equipment. And, and we know that Entergy routinely brags about cutting maintenance spending to increase shareholder dividends. And this, what we're experiencing in, in these issues of reliability is the byproduct of that. I'd say that while Entergy is failing to meet its end of the regulatory compact of providing safe and reliable service, ratepayers are still suffering. Um, I appreciate Councilmember Moreno's question about whether Entergy is in compliance with the council's current reliability standards. Uh, we have pushed since those standards were adopted for them to be stronger. Mr. Rogers suggests that they're a bare minimum and that the council hopes that Entergy will exceed them. I would submit that as regulators, you should set the standard at the level you expect Entergy to perform and then enforce that standard. Two weeks ago, the Energy Future New Orleans Coalition sent a letter to this body calling for an end to utility disconnections and the establishment of an arrears management program using Entergy settlement funds. Ratepayers need relief now while Entergy continues to work on its reliability.
Thank you, Mr. George. All right, Casey DeMoss and then Larry Morgan.